All right, good evening, everyone. I'm pounding the table. I got this wooden mallet. We'll see how I use it tonight. Of that, yes. So, one, two, three, four. We have to wait. So, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and, um, we've got our five is, um, yep. All right, so we can go ahead and call this meeting to order. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors is now called to order. Um, Ms. Kulpmeier, would you please call the room? Yes?
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Ms. Lewis? Mr. Oats?
Present.
Mr. Fiero?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Morris? Dr. Hartsfield? Ms. Robinson?
If there is no objection to approving the agenda, then we can approve as presented. Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. So at this time, we will go to the, tonight's workshop presentation. So, the board will turn it over to Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, before we do our presentation on our summer school report, we want the board in the community to be aware that every year we give this report, this report is given while summer school is still in progress, while we still have some data that's still being calculated and, and, and posted in all of our other database systems. And so what you will have today is an update, uh, right now, that's up to our, where we are currently as we close out. We still have two sites that are in operation for summer school. And then generally what we end up doing is we come back with a full report at the completion of, after the completion of summer school. So, I want to bring, uh, Kristi, Dr. Kristi Harrison, up, uh, to go through our workshop for the month of July.
Good evening. I have our summer school report. Um, so as Dr. Bedell said, we are still in session. We're at two of our sites. So, the, um, Upper Room and Boys and Girls Club are still in session for summer school, uh, currently. Um, our KCPS program has ended, as well as Seven Strategic and Alvin Ailey. Um, this year, we were, uh, our enrollment numbers for summer school were right around 6,000 students. KCPS had 3,564 students enrolled. That enrollment is significantly up. It's up a little over 50%. Uh, last year, we had 1,788 students. So, it's a huge increase in our enrollment, um, which means a lot of things for our district, um, financially, but it also means things for our students, um, from the aspect of just, uh, the instruction that they receive, as well as the credits that they could be earning and, um, the experiences that they earn throughout the summer. So, we're really pleased with those numbers and excited about that. Um, as we look at our attendance data for summer, we, for the summer so far, keep in mind again that this data is still live data and moving because we still have some programs going. But as we look at our data, KCPS programs ran right around 85% attendance, and our other programs hovered in between the seventies to, um, anywhere in between the upper eighties. And, uh, we had one program that was in the 96% at, with Alvin Ailey. That program only had around 30 students in it, and it was an enrichment program. Um, so it was quite different, uh, than some of our other programs. But overall, our attendance ran around 85% for the, all programs within the district as well. One of the ways that we monitor our partners is by issuing survey data to our students and our teachers. And as we look at this teacher survey data, this is just a snapshot. We, um, actually asked many more questions than this, but I couldn't put them all on the slide, so I just grabbed a handful of them. And so as we look at some of our partners, we ask teachers and students questions about their commitment to the program, but also about things that happened within the program. And these questions allow us to look through the lens of a teacher or a student to see what's actually happening in their, from their perspective. And so this here shows you from the lens of a teacher, what they saw within their program, the Boys and Girls Clubs, Seven Strategic, or the Upper Room. And you can see that from the, um, top two questions are questions around their commitment. "I was committed to the summer program where I can manage." And so they overwhelmingly believe that they can do that. But then as you go down through the other questions, those are questions that are more around the programs that they work in. So, those questions are around the support that they receive, the technology, the supplies, how discipline is handled. I mean, so those questions allow us a little bit, um, closer of a look at the day-to-day happenings of the particular program. And so we utilize this data to help us make some decisions around those programs, but also to provide some feedback to our partners and to work with them to better strengthen their programs. And so, here, this is just, again, a snapshot of some of that data. And so you can see, we have some programs that are a little bit stronger than others. So, this is a t, example of some teacher survey data. And when we look at the student survey data, we have the same kinds of questions. We have questions where we have ways, things that they feel about themselves. So, if I try hard, I can do well. If I do well, it'll help me when I grow up. But then we also have questions about how my teachers are helping me, or if I want to come back to this particular site. Questions that allow us to look deeper into the happenings within the particular program. And so, again, we break that down. We break this data down not only by program, but by building, by individual site within that program. So, if a program has more than one site, we can see how, which individual site is doing what. And so that data is very useful for the partners to make decisions around their program, but it's also useful for us in helping to make decisions around our partners. Um, then we have some pre and post data for, uh, the assessments that we give using the achievement series. When we look at this assessment data, we're looking at this as really a progress monitoring piece. We have to keep in mind several things. One thing is that summer school is 18 days. The assessment is given in the first week and the last week. So, in between those two weeks of, there are two weeks of instruction. So, we have 10 days of instruction in between this. So, we're not looking at mastery here. We're really looking at progress monitoring. How are students doing as, as they're progressing through what they're doing? So, as we look at this, we had new curriculum this school year that was written for both ELA and for math. And as we look at math, we see we had some really significant growth in some areas. Um, from most of our areas, the district did fairly well in our math. Um, overall, we had good growth in math. In ELA, we did not have as strong of scores. Um, we have some area, some work to do there, and we actually took some dips in some of our ELA. Um, when we look at this, we know we have some work to do around this. We know that we need to look at our curriculum, and we need to see, did we have a misalignment in our scope and sequence? Did we have a misalignment of our assessments to our curriculum? What are those areas that are causing us to have this issue within our, our, um, assessment scores? And so as we do that, we take an even deeper dive, and we can look at each one of our assessment strands, and we can disaggregate that down by standard. And so I, this is, again, just a snapshot, as we have way too many standards to show. But as we look at those standards, we can look at each one of them individually, and we can see how students did, pre, post, and what that change is. So, what we will do then is we will take each one of those, we will break those down, and we will see, number one, did we assess too much? Did we put too much into the curriculum for such a short span of time and try to, uh, cover just too much in that, um, that short amount of time? Or did we pick a standard that we just simply can't, can't do in that amount of time? Or what is the issue behind that? And so that'll be something that the curriculum team will be able to do, the assessment team will be able to break down, and then we'll be able to work with our, um, summer school teachers and principals moving forward on how they could utilize this data to really ensure that students are learning and, and mastering this. One thing that we have done for the last several years throughout, uh, my time in KCPS is written and rewritten summer school curriculum over and over. And so using this kind of deep dive into the curriculum will allow us to not have to do that, but to just fine tune and tweak that curriculum so that we can make it something that's really viable and useful for our students. Um, another piece of summer school is our Senate Bill 319 students. And so Senate Bill 319 students are students that are reading two grade levels below in the fourth grade. Uh, the law mandates that they are retained. Uh, they can go to summer school, and if they are, they are tested at the end of summer school, and if they are, uh, brought up, then, in their reading levels, then they can be promoted. So, there were 84 students at the end of this school year who were deemed Senate Bill 319 students. Of those 84 students, 49 of them attended summer school. So, that meant 35 students did not show up for summer school. Those 35 students, um, we did attempt to call those students, to, um, reach out to them in various ways, multiple times. Um, teachers and administrators made every effort to contact those students. But again, we also know that our district is very mobile, and so with that mobility, we don't know how many of those students are still even within our district boundaries. So, we had 40 students who, excuse me, 49 students who came back to us. And of those 49 students, 40 of them were eligible for promotion at the end of summer school. That's a huge number and very significant for us. That's, um, almost seems unbelievable, but I can tell you that it's very, very real numbers, and there's some very exciting things around that. One of the things that we implemented this year in summer schools, we went from two interventionists that we traditionally have in our two buildings to nine. And, um, that was kind of hard-pressed and something that I fought really hard for, but something that I felt was really important. So, we's, we kept Senate Bill kids in the, their neighborhood schools, and we put those interventionists there. We utilized the model that we are going to be utilizing in our regular school year moving forward. So, we trained those reading interventionists very thoroughly before summer school started. And we gave them all of the tools that they needed to move these students forward. So, what this shows me on a very small scale is that the model that we are about to roll out for our reading intervention program works. And so I'm excited and encouraged by that because we are about to launch a intervention program district-wide with RTI, and this is encouraging to show that, that we have, um, a step in the right direction. So, those students that are, that were not promoted, so those nine students that didn't make it, and then the 35 that were, didn't show up, um, if they return to our district in the fall, then those students will be reassessed at the beginning of the school year, and they will be put on a targeted reading improvement plan for SY 2019. Um, and that is a part of the law, but it also will be something that we will utilize through our, RTI program moving forward. We look at our high school students. We had a significant growth in the number of high school students that we served this summer. We had 926 students enrolled in courses for credit. Some of those students were enrolled in courses for credit recovery, and some were enrolled in credit for the first time, for original credit. I can't break that number down for you yet because we're still going through those final, uh, those final data points, but I can tell you that we have a huge growth in the number of students who earned original credit this summer. Um, we had 16 students who graduated during the month of June. In the June graduation, those were students who should have graduated in May, but finished up with us in June. So, those stu, there are also a few more students who are still finishing out with us and that will, um, will finish up. One thing that we have discussed is pushing our June graduation back to August so that those students that are still finishing up, we can have one graduation and they can all graduate together. So, it's something we're exploring as we move forward. Another way that we monitor not only our own program, but our partner programs is through wa, walkthroughs. And so this is, again, just a snapshot. There are many more data points that we look at as we, um, look at our programs, but, um, we look at things like the instructional activity being aligned to the learning objective, how are those lessons emphasizing higher-order thinking, the teachers conveying high expectations. And so here's some, um, percentages around some of the walkthroughs that were be, that were conducted this summer and, and how those were looked at. And so every administrator, building-level administrator, that's principal and vice-principal, is assigned a site, whether it's one of our KCPS sites, or it is a partner site, and they are responsible for going out and conducting walkthroughs and providing feedback, not only to the teacher that they give the walkthrough, do the walkthrough with, but then to the building principal, um, of that site. And so even our partner sites had to hire building principals this summer. So, that was something new that we implemented, and I think helped us significantly, um, this summer when we look at the issues and things that we traditionally have. Um, so, we are, we're excited, and, um, I think we made some good strides. We still have some things that we need to work on as we move forward in summer school, but we're definitely making some strides in the right direction.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bedell. Are there any comments that you want to make?
Yeah, I, just quickly, just for the, uh, community's consumption and, and the board too. This is our first year, um, attempting to revamp the way we, we go about conducting summer school. And I generally have a major concern when summer school is only 20 days. And I know when I worked in Houston, it was only 20 days. Um, and, and it's, and, and it's, it's something that, that really does concern me because when you begin to look at data, I just don't really know how you're going to be able to really see some significance in growth with, with summer school being that short in many cases. And we know that by the time we hit the month of July, just like most of us in here, it's vacation time. Families are getting away, or they're doing, you know, the things that, oh, it's-
Not on? Oh. Oops. But, but the vacation component really does play a factor, and so we really want to do everything in our power to make it meaningful. And it's interesting because we just talked about this upstairs when we did the dry run. Um, I just don't want it to be something that we're just doing for the sake of doing it. I don't, I don't like wasting people's time. I don't like wasting resources. And so I truly believe that we're going to continuously look at this, we'll learn from this year, and, uh, figure out how we can really maximize the amount of time that we have, uh, with the children during that, that short period that, that, that's allotted. So, that's kind of our goal at this point. I am looking forward to, uh, seeing the end data. Uh, I'm very proud of the kids that took care of original credits because we had kids who knocked out their personal finance courses. Some of them did PE as an original credit, and some of them knocked out their, um, uh, what's the course, is a history course?
American Government.
Amer, was it, what was the course?
American Government.
American Government. They, well, they knocked out those courses. And what it did was it allowed for us now to have some freedom in their schedules because we know we've struggled as a school district with kids taking more rigorous classes. Our IB percentage of kids taking, at the percentage of kids taking AP classes and even some potential dual enrollment. That opens up opportunities for us to really increase more opportunities for kids to take those kind of courses when they can knock out a lot of those electives during the summer.
Mr. Oats?
Um, thank you for the presentation. There were a couple of things, I kind of emailed those in advance to discuss, but, uh, just on the, the second slide, I guess, on the attendance data, um, as you, there, there are some programs that are like really high, and then it looks like, for the most part, all the other programs kind of hover around what KCPS averages itself just throughout the school year. Is there anything that we take from what's working to bring kids to school programming-wise, anything like that, to help us in our path to like moving towards that 90-90 goal?
So, the, the one program that is really high, the Alvin Ailey program, is, that's the program that has, they have attend, they have 30 students enrolled. So, their program is significantly different, so, um, and, and their program is also completely enrichment. So, it's a dance program. Um, so it, it is quite different. All of the other programs offer credit recovery and remedial-type options, so it's completely optional to go to Alvin Ailey. So, I think that definitely plays a factor into their program. Um, also, our partner programs this year offered an incentive for attendance. Um, in subsequent years, moving forward, we're not, that won't be an option. So, um, we're eliminating that from all of our programs so that we are all on the same playing field. So, I think that we'll see that. But I do think that one of the things that we looked at as a district in, in our, even our curriculum and just our programming in general, is how can we make summer school more fun, if that makes sense? But, you know, and so we're looking at, we want to keep the rigor, and we want to keep the, um, integrity of the program, but we also want to have an element of fun in there and, and a reason for kids to want to come to school.
Sure, and just, oh, I was going to say, even just, I, while Alvin Ailey is an enrichment-only program, I mean, at 96%, I mean, that mean a lot of people are getting up each morning, excited to go. And so when you think about just what's offered in elementary schools-
Right.
-or things like that, like maybe dance is something kids these days is really interested in, or, just, I, that's why I was just wondering, is there any kind of reflection on that, just as far as like what, what makes sure that that kids come to school each day?
And I, I will say to you, well, go ahead.
Oh, I agree. And I think, so one of the things we added this year was we added iSparks, which is the project Lead the Way for the elementary. And so we need to continue to add more of that kind of programming for all of our students, not just our elementary, but for all of our students, so that there is that enrichment piece that can still be towards the academic, but that still allows those students to have that experience that draws them in, that makes, gives them that peace for that reason that they want to come. Because you're right, there is a reason that those kids are getting up and going to that program every day.
And I know our, our plan, and we shared this with you all in executive session, is to try to create this culture and climate where there's a true sense of belonging. I think sometimes the kids don't necessarily feel that what we're doing is for them, more so than it may be for us as adults. And how do we create that sense of belonging by just, just setting the tone the right way? And that's, I think you saw that in executive session around us, beginning to have this new fire lit in everybody, including our students and how we received them those first couple of weeks. And, uh, we, we think that that could begin the trend of where they begin to value these opportunities more, and hopefully we'll see, um, attendance rates and those kind of things really increase this year.
Ms. Wolfsee, and then Mr. Evans.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I want to make sure you guys know about Springfield Public Schools, because I think it was two or three years ago when I was at MSBA, they revamped their entire summer school program, based on a lot of the things that we're talking about. And they did a very nice presentation about how much, um, enrollment increased over, once they did that revamp. So, I would encourage you to reach out to that partic, it's Springfield Public Schools here in Kent, in Missouri. So, I do have, uh, one question with regards, it just sparked when you said, "We're not going to utilize the partners to have incentives." So, it was just interesting to me when we were at Banneker recently for the other off-site board meeting, um, that apparently, you know, other summer programs now everybody, since summer attendance does work into, I guess, average daily attendance, so we have a lot of, um, schools now, especially a lot of charter schools, offering summer programs. And they are using incentives. And so that is one of the things that, and I, they had reported at Banneker that a number of people that, you know, they didn't choose Banneker for summer school, they ended up choosing, uh, charter summer program mainly because of the incentive. So, I just want to make sure that when we're evaluating that, we're contemplating, um, how that plays into the decision-making for a lot of our parents. Obviously, um, the, what is offered is as important, I think, in enticing them to come. I know there are schools, um, and districts around the country that work with, almost like the Summer Institute for the teachers and the principals, where it's, teachers actually decide what it is they're going to, they, um, actually offer early on, they'll, um, explain, "This is the class that I want to offer during summer school." And teachers get excited about it, and then the students and the parents get excited about it. So, I agree, bringing some excitement to summer school will go a long way towards actually helping us with enrollment and attendance.
And that's actually one of the models that we've been looking at, is how we could incorporate that into our summer program.
Springfield Superintendent owes us a presentation, so I will make sure that we have that conversation with him about their model.
Dr. Bedell, I'm glad you mentioned that you are taking a closer look at summer school because having summer school for the sake of having it, it could be an exercise in futility. If you're not moving the needle as far as academic achievement is concerned, then, you know, you have to really decide whether it's, it's worth it because 20 days is not very long. And summer school should be, uh, for enrichment as well as for making up subjects that you perhaps missed out on. So, I hope that you will continue to weigh the positives and the negatives, and if it's not doing a lot of good, then you may want to either extend summer school, uh, maybe go to the year-round deal, or just cut it out altogether.
Are there any additional questions? Um, I have a question regarding, um, the Senate Bill 319 students. So, based on the data that you've provided to us, there are 44 students who were identified as part of Senate Bill 319, who in fact did not, um, either they didn't, the, we have 35 who did not attend summer school, and you attempted to reach them, and nine who did participate, but it's been a, but through the assessment, it's been determined that they need to be retained. So, of the students, um, who did not attend summer school, it, are, if those students, um, returned to us in the fall, you've identified that we'll certainly have them reevaluated. Are all schools, all public schools within our boundaries obligated to adhere to the Senate Bill 319 rules? And so by that, I mean not just district schools, but also charter schools, um, elementary schools. Would they also be required then to assess students because they would be, have been identified as, uh, falling within the 319 criteria?
Yes, yes. My understanding is yes, that all schools within the state of Missouri would be, uh, would be held to that same law.
Okay, so students who did not attend summer school, and we were not able to reach them, um, did their, would their, were their families informed about what the implications were for that? And do you believe they fully understood what that meant for their, their child, whether they stay with us or go to an alternative location?
Yes, we have, um, very thorough documentation and paperwork that is provided to families, um, is translated and all of that, that, um, that, and, is given to parents at parent-teacher conferences, and then gone over again multiple times throughout the year. Um, and then they, that, the end of the year, at the final assessment, is signed off by parents. So, it's an individual face-to-face meeting that parents have with schools. So, they, they're very aware of the impl, implementations of that.
Um, just one other question related to, um, the, uh, using the interventionists, the reading literacy interventionists. So, you had gone, you indicated from two the prior year, and you secured nine. Are those nine individuals already part of our workforce, or were these individuals new to our district?
Um, both. They, some of them are reading interventionists that we hired for, that, moving forward for this next school year, and some of them were teachers within the, the district that we hired that are going to become reading interventionists. So, they're all becoming reading interventionists in some way, shape, or form.
So, they're, they're with us? I mean, in other words, we don't lose, they, they're not part of another district but working-
Correct.
...in the summer, they become part of our team?
Yes, in order to work for us for summer school, you have to be a member of KCPS staff.
Are there any other questions? All right. Um, with that, Dr. Bedell, do you have, um- With that, Dr. Bedell, do you have any business items that you need to notify us? All right. Well, given that we've completed the agenda this evening, if there's no objection, this meeting will be adjourned.